Scott, you all set?
Yes.
Scott, the meeting will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota? Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay? Mayor Leahy? Seven present.
For start of business, we have spotlight on excellence, the Lowell High School Boys Cross Country Team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could, Athletic Director Dave Lozinski is here. He will introduce the team in what has become the annual recognition of the superb work of Coach Scott Hulett. So, we'll recognize our coach as we, it seems we have done each year in this chamber to recognize the longevity and legacy that he's establishing at Lowell High School. But to do this honor properly, Athletic Director Dave Lozinski, if you can introduce our students in the accomplishments of this season.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boyd. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the school committee, Dr. Boyd and staff. The Department of Athletics at Lowell High School is proud to announce that the Boys Cross Country Program is being recognized for their outstanding achievements during the 2021 fall season. Our spotlight on excellence recipient is the Boys Cross Country Team. The Boys Cross Country Team recently completed the regular season Merrimack Valley Conference Schedule with a 10-0 record. This undefeated season was the 12th consecutive year of a perfect record. In total, the team has now accumulated a record of 117 and 0 since the end of the 2009 season. The team had 16 dedicated student athletes, six seniors, five juniors, three sophomores, and two freshmen. All six seniors have applied to four-year colleges and are awaiting notification of acceptance. The remaining schedule consists of the MIAA State Tournament. I would like to introduce now Mr. Scott Hulett and his staff to introduce the players.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. It's great to be here, you know, to honor the kids and the program, and it's definitely a sense of pride for us. You know, in my role as head coach at Lowell High School, that's just sort of a promotion of many roles that I've had over the years, in the 21 years that I've been there. And I'll say that of all the roles that I've had, that is, this job that I have now is by far the one that brings me the most gratification, and it's the one that means the most to me. Having been an athlete myself on the team, and really growing up through the Lowell Public Schools. I can remember, I was reflecting on it today, my life in running began in 1984 at the Washington School when I was a student, and the gym teacher had us doing laps around the school at the old Washington. So, I remember that, and how that inspired me to, you know, participate in sports and things like that. So, that's just what you learn, I think, when you grow up in Lowell, and you go through, and you can, you know, make an impact. So, that's what we try to do. And this team, aside of the record that we had with the 117 wins over the years, one thing that we are very proud of is that we put on the middle school cross-country series at Shed Park every week. And we do that, these kids, our high school program sponsors that, and that's a free event for all the kids in the city. And this year, we were most proud because it was our record, we had over 500 kids participate in that. So, we felt that, especially coming out of the pandemic, getting the kids to get involved in activities and things like that, that that was something that we took extra pride in. And we had a great year over at Shed Park. So, we want to keep that up next year, and I know all these guys did that. I would be remiss if I went any further without really recognizing also our girls program, who helps us with that cross-country event at Shed Park. They have a great group of coaches and athletes, and really the girls, they inspire us, the great competitors that they are, and their dedicated team members. So, we want to recognize our girls program. And also, me personally, I want to recognize the two assistant coaches that we have. Nick McCartel is a teacher at the Sullivan School, and Nick was a member of our team. I coached Nick many years ago, and now that he's, you know, in the coaching role, it just, that's a lot of pride for me seeing him promoted up. And what he does for these kids is really incredible. And our other assistant coach is Brian Gagnon, who's a firefighter. So, just to see the way that those two guys give back, and they were a part of the program. And me personally, I was an assistant coach for 16 years. So, I know what the assistant coaches do. They live and die for these kids, and they do everything for them. And our program really would be non-existent without those two assistants. So, I wanted to give them their recognition. But really, at this time, what this really should be about is at least letting the kids introduce themselves. You can see who they are. A number of them are here with us today, so I'd like to bring them up, and we can introduce them, okay? So, come on up, guys. Matthew, you want to go first?
I'm Matthew Morneau. I live on 357 Petugat Street. I'm a senior here at Lowell High School, and I went to the Daly Middle School. I love this team because some of the best memories we had, such as winning the MVC Championship. And I hope to run as long as I can, and yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan Courtney. I live at 141 Bedford Ave., and I went to the Wang Middle School before this. And what I like most is the family-like bond I've created with my teammates over the past couple of years. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Francis Kelly. I live on 169 Sanders Ave., senior at Lowell High, went to Mrs. Skinner's Middle School, James S. Dillay Middle School. And freshman year, I started out, I played football and basketball. I was suggested by Coach Scott Hulett and a few other people to move over to cross-country. And that led me to indoor track as well, and ever since then, made a lot of friends along the way, a lot more good decisions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Vandy. I live on 324 Suffolk Street, and I'm a senior at Lowell High School. And the pain that we all go through together, like going through workouts, losses, wins, is all together. And we've grown an unbreakable bond, and because of that's why I love this team so much.
Hi, my name is Shai Ibrahim. I'm a senior at Lowell High School, 142 Third Street. What really brought me to cross-country was the, I mean, I liked running in general, but it was the joy of joining a team that really brought me to... It was the joy of running that brought me towards this team, and I'm glad I joined it because without them, I didn't, I don't think I'd be, I don't know what I'd be doing. Because it's just, it's not just a team, it's just like a family, they're like brothers to me at the end of the day. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darlan Arango. I live in 48 Sidney Street, and I appreciate a lot coming to this team. It's, the sport cross-country has like better my grades. Like, I agree with Frank, what Frank said, I met a couple of new friends, which I appreciate a lot. I love all the effort that we all put in, also the coaches, to winning these big meets and participating in this sport. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Alexander Walpo. I'm a junior at Lowell High School, and I came from Lowell Community Charter Public School. And the reason why I run is because I love this sport, and I love this team. And cross-country may be a sport, but participating on this team welcomed me to a family. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dante Keles. I can, I am from Lowell High School. I'm a junior, and I originally came from Lowell Community Charter Public School. The reason why I run cross-country is because of the family dynamic, the love from the coaches and from my teammates. So, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jack Courtney, and I went to the Wang Middle School, and I'm a sophomore at Lowell High. And as soon as I started running, I just realized how much friendships that I was able to make, and how much bonds I can make, and it just really made me a better person overall. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jace Korea. I live on 139 Addie Way, and I'm a sophomore at Lowell High, and I went to the Stocklosa Middle School. And the reason why I like, I love cross-country is because it allows me to grow, and I get to see all my friends grow, and we get to compete together. And that's the thing, seeing them six days a week, it makes me love them even more, and love the team and love the sport. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Victor Dong. I live on 440 West Meadow Road. I'm a sophomore at Lowell High School, and before this, I went to the Wang Middle School. I love cross-country because of the competitive atmosphere and my teammates.
Hello, I'm Jezzy Awartas. I came from the Stocklosa Middle School. I am a freshman at Lowell High, and one of the reasons why I'm running is I just love the sport. And yeah.
Hello, my name is Raymond Adedruel, and I'm from 87 Ludlam Street, and I went to the Butler Middle School. And one of the things that made me do cross-country is that my coaches in my middle school said it's going to help me grow, and I made a lot of friends on the way. That's it.
Hello, my name is Schneider Pierre. I am a freshman at Lowell High, and I originally came from LCCPS. And the reason why I do this sport is because I used to just love running, and I just stayed with it till freshman year, and I met new friends, and I consider them my family. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Tristan Dodge. I'm a junior, and I joined cross-country because my dad's a big runner. So, I was, you know, I just thought I would do as well, get up to his legacy. I think he's very good. And yeah, that's about it.
These 16 young men are just a small sample of the shining, shining stars that we have at Lowell High School. I applaud each and every one of them.
Thank you, students. You've represented yourselves, your families, and our community quite well. I am extremely proud to serve as your superintendent, and I congratulate you on a season well done. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming down. Do you want to do a quick picture? Just pile everybody in, and we'll do a quick picture. Before you guys leave, we got one, a couple of comments, Scott. Scott, before you leave, a couple of comments. I just want to recognize our high school representative, Mr. Ferrer. Did you want to say a couple of words?
Oh, yeah. So, I was in the Lowell High School track program from my freshman to junior year, and I was under Coach Hulett's guidance, along with Coach Casey, Nick, and Gagnon. I just got to say, like, there's a reason why we're undefeated for so long. Somebody like Coach Hulett, he's like the Bill Belichick of cross-country in MVC. Like, he's like leading a dynasty and affecting us, not only in ways to make us better athletes, but to like discipline us better in life. You hear from almost everybody who went up, it's about making like a family, a bond. Now, I consider a lot of these guys like my brothers, so I'm really happy to see them being honored for all the hard work they put in, along with Coach Hulett's efforts over like the last 12 years. Like, yeah, it's quite a while. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Keep on the, keep the success going, Scott. No pressure. Dave, you're out there running too? Stay out there running. All right, next we have the minutes. Need a motion to approve the regular scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell High School, Lowell School Committee meeting, November 3rd. Place them on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. I know, I can't see your name, I forgot your name. Well, I'm looking for the name tags. Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The permission to enter for this week's in the packet. Staff is available for questions. The recommendations approval as written.
Any questions on permission to enter? Now, need a motion to approve by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota? Mr. Dillon? Ms. Dougherty? Mr. Lay? Mayor Leahy? Seven years approved.
Next, we have memorials. First memorial is for Ann Obara, sister of retired Lowell Public School Science and Social Study Coordinator Martha Kohn. Mr. Charles E. Gallagher, father of former Lowell School Committee Member Attorney Michael Gallagher. We have also one for Hem Hay, mother of City Councilor Sikari Chow. And Mr. Dakota, you wanted to add one more?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Arlene Notonis was John Dakota's mother, and she is also the mother-in-law of Pam Dakota, who is a para in the Lowell Public Schools. Grandmother to Brittany Dakota Martin, who is a Lowell Public School teacher. Aunt to Greg and Aaron Dakota, retired art teachers in the Lowell Public School. Aunt to Sam Dakota, a music teacher in Lowell Public Schools. And a sister-in-law to me. Kind of like keeping it in the family, but she's a great woman, and she's finally at rest. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could dim the lights. Next, we have motions. First motion tonight by Mr. Dakota and Mr. Lay. Ask Superintendent at the, ask Superintendent and the mayor to pursue a response from the city as to what their plans for the school facility repairs, upgrades are planned going forward. The school department needs this information in a timely fashion in order to make coherent and fiscal decisions. Mr. Dakota, do you want to go first?
Certainly, I think the motion basically speaks for itself. I think we need some kind of information from the city council and the city manager before we can make commitments on our end, because there are a lot of things on our plate, basically, that we need to look at. And I believe that taking care of our younger children in schools is a really big priority in my book. I've been saying this since last summer, that we need boots on the ground. We need teachers in front of our kids, and so if that means we can't afford to shell out money that the city should be taking care of, then so be it. We need to get, need to get people in front of our kids, especially at Delmonte LaVille. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this motion is similar to the last one that we have in regards to we, school department, we are putting in a good amount of money from the SF Fund to try to fix, try to put into the pool to fix the school facilities. And we haven't heard from the city side yet. So, it is important that we want to hear from the city what they plan to do, when they're going to put their money in to the pool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? I can tell you that, I know that they're working on, I spoke to CFO today on this, so we should have an answer relatively soon. Thank you. All those approve of the motions, say aye. Next motion tonight by myself, motion to accept a donation from the Geary family to renovate the memorial stone for Joseph Geary located at the Riley School. Seconded by Ms. Martin. That's the drawing that I put on your desk, so you can just see, they're going to do a brick platform in front of the stone with three benches. So, it's all paid for by the Geary family, just to upgrade it. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Next motion tonight by Ms. Dougherty. So, you have a revised motion of the motion? So, read the first motion first, and then do the revised motion. Okay, all right. So, motion 7-3. Request Superintendent provide the updated report on... Request Superintendent provide the updated report on SEL competency ratings with particular focus on what's being done to support at-risk students using the DESA assessments. And the report should include number of students identified at at-risk, comparative analysis of the data from prior years, explanations of supports and interventions being implemented across the district. In addition, the report should include information about how many students are being removed from the school by ambulance due to mental health concerns, and how that compares to the prior years to, prior years to March 2019. Seconded by Ms. Martin, and then your revised one, you have that?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So, what, what I did, and I have spoken with Dr. Boyd about this today. The intention of the motion is to provide us with accurate data as to the numbers and percentage of students at risk for mental health concerns, which I know we've all been hearing anecdotally, we've been reading about other districts. This information is very important as it will enable us to better gauge the level of need and assess the amount and distribution of resources. So, the change was really to extend the data that's being collected. So, I'll read it for you, and I believe LTC is going to be able to put it up on the screen for us. Request the Superintendent provide a report on students at risk for trauma and social-emotional concerns. Using the DESA assessments, the report should include the percentage and number of students by grade identified as at-risk, comparative analysis of data from prior years, and explanation of supports and interventions being implemented. In addition, the report should include data on the number of students being removed from school by ambulance due to mental health concerns, and the number of 51As, FTCs, and CRAs being filed, along with how that data compares to years prior to March 2019. And just for clarification on those acronyms, 51A is what is filed when there's concern regarding abuse or neglect. CRA is a child requiring assistance, usually it's between ages 6 to 16, regarding behavior and truancy. And FTC means failure to compel regarding attendance. So, mostly that's regarding chronic absenteeism with, for younger students, especially elementary and middle schools. So, the thinking was by getting all that data together, we would really have a full picture of what our students are facing and what our staff are facing on a daily basis, because I think the mental health concerns of our staff are also a concern at this point. So, that was the, the thinking behind expanding it to include these other data points, and that once we have a full handle, so it's not just anecdotal, we can begin to look at where the needs are. As my colleague, Mr. Dakota, mentioned, this feelings that it's going to be at the element, the first graders need the most support. We might also find the ninth graders or the fifth gr, you know, those transition years. But to just start with really taking a look at what the data is telling us and using that as a basis to make decisions about resources going forward. I would really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is everyone fine with the amendment? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think it's an opportune time. I did, Committee Member Dougherty and I did speak, and this is actually in process already. And my hope is that we can, at least in a partial way, if not in a full way, have a discussion on the next committee meeting. That slide deck will be compiled for the committee. One request at this time, which I was hoping to entertain at the end, but I think it's more opportune now. Next week is the partial week due to the Thanksgiving Day holiday. You have a policy that requires us to upload the committee agenda and packet on the Friday prior. I would ask if we could suspend that rule for this week and allow the administration to upload the packet on the subsequent Monday. It's still 48 hours before, still meets OMA. It just won't meet your policy. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're willing to entertain a motion on that, that would certainly be supportive in us responding to this as soon as possible.
Okay, sure. We don't need a motion on that, but I think we're all agreeable to that, so.
Thank you.
That'd work out fine. Thank you. Next reports of Superintendent, we have COVID report. There is a registered speaker. Would you like the speaker to go first, Mr. Superintendent?
That's, whatever be the will of the body. Presentation 8.1 and 8.2 go together, so the speaker first perhaps, and then we can just move straight through the two presentations as one narrative for the committee and the community.
Okay, thank you.
Sherri Simmons?
Okay, I don't think she's here, so. Just jump right in, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in standard form, you have a COVID-19 update. Also tonight, we're going to share with you an update on ensuring that all of our schools are safe and welcoming environments for our students and families. Presentation one, what we added for you is some additional information and discussion about the types of operational obstacles that have come out of the pandemic environment that we still find ourselves in. So, Mr. Mayor, if you're okay, we'll move straight through 8.1, 8.2, and then questions throughout as the committee has questions. But you will see that the conversation on safe and welcoming schools is a subsequent conversation to the COVID update on data and operational obstacles that we and other school districts have encountered. Dr. Hall will start us, and then Ms. Desmond will pick it up for safe and welcoming schools.
Do we have the monitor engaged? Oh, great. So, first up here, here's the dashboard that you can access, again, for the public on the Lowell Public Schools website, which has all the data. I did want to stress, as we brief by exception, because there's a lot of data in here. We did have one excellent development since the last school committee meeting in that we had 300 more pool testers added over the last two weeks to the weekly amount of pool testing, so we are making some progress there. I'd also like to thank Principal Jason McCreeven, who substituted in over the last week and helped organize and present some of this data and assist with the total program. He's been a great help. And we also have had a lot of collaboration with the city and the COVID Response Coordinator, Joanne Keegan, who's a great assistance. We've had a great vaccine clinic at the McAuliffe Elementary, where 204 people got vaccinated, which included 136 students between the ages of five and 11. And following that, we have three more vaccine clinics this week, with the Bridge has already occurred, the Bartlett was today, and the STEM is on Friday. And we also have eight other elementary schools and the Pine that have applied to be vaccine sites, and we're just waiting for DESI approval, which we expect. So, here are the, you know, ongoing totals and the totals for the range. The range week are the dates. Here are our programs, which we've gone over, with the test and stay, which has been successful in keeping students learning. And here are our testing numbers. This last slide highlights some of the progress we've made in getting more and more people to participate. As you can see, we were at 19% back in mid-October. Now, we're up to 24.7, so we are making some steady progress. And again, there were 300 extra people that participated, and we certainly appreciate the parents who consented and encouraged their children to participate in that. So, I did want to just go over a few impacts on operations, which I'm sure the committee's tracking. We did look at some data, and we're going to look at some more, but earlier, you know, 2019 was brought up. So, coincidentally, we looked at this year versus 2019 for the week of Veterans Day, just to see how COVID was impacting absences. And as you can see with teachers and para-professionals, and these are positions that require substitutes generally, there really wasn't that great of a difference in absences. The real impact is the fill rate from what you can see in the data below. So, for example, in 2021, we had a 41.27 fill rate for the whole week of Veterans Day. But for the whole week of Veterans Day in 2019, there was a 65.34% fill rate. So, you know, that's 25% that we couldn't fill. And you can see from our pool that we had 2,000, oh, sorry, 150 subs available in 2019 at this point in the year, but this year, we had 128. So, that somehow matches up with the 25% difference in fill rate. I shouldn't, I'm happy to report to the committee that some of those incentive programs, where, you know, find your substitute, we have had, as of last Friday, we had six referrals that we're processing through the bonuses for that. So, that certainly added some people. And one more thing that I have down here, too, and additionally, the increased pay is resulting in some more substitutes coming in. But you can see, too, with COVID, the duration of absences complicates the stress of an absence. But I did want to highlight, too, that if you think about it, if we're having the same percentage absence now as we had in 2019, that to me means the teachers are, and paras are making an extraordinary effort not to take personal days and to be present when they're not sick. So, I do feel that our staff deserves a lot of credit for their initiative and zeal to come in to support the system. I think if you think about it, they probably do realize that if they're out, it has a more serious impact on their peers. And although we don't have stats on it, I suspect that has a lot to do with where we are here. It could be a lot worse, but for the staff helping out in that way. So, on other impacts that have been asked for before, we do have an IEP grant that we were fortunate to get, where there's going to be 28 para positions funded through this grant to assist in special education and IEP support. So, we have those positions posted, but as everyone knows, there's not a great supply of people applying for these positions. We've had under 10 applicants for these positions that have been up for about a week. We have filled all of our teacher positions. However, as we go through the year, people are leaving for promotions in our district or in other districts, or we have ongoing FMLA leaves or maternity leaves. So, we're always looking for people to fill in for two to three months or even longer, if you're available in the community and interested. And of course, para-professionals, while licensed and qualified, are stepping up and taking advantage of the program that the committee passed, whereas if you're in for more than 15 days in a row as the substitute teacher and the responsible delts in the room, those teachers are getting $125 stipend to bring them up close to where a first-year teacher would earn. So, that is helping. Of course, things could be better, but I think they could also be a lot worse as well. The cafeteria, that's one place we need a lot of assistance. A lot of principals, to their credit, are sending out information to parents and weekly flyers, and we're getting a lot of grandparents and parents who are willing to come in and help with food service. The big thing that we need is people that may want a second job or a few hours in the afternoon. We have a need for the Power Up program at the high school. We're trying to launch meals for students who are participating in clubs and sports. We don't quite have enough personnel to offer the sandwiches and pizza and full meals. However, we do have Power Up now, which is snacks and protein shakes. If we could get more people to work in this afternoon program, we certainly could make that a lot bigger. So, if you're interested in that, please contact HR. And also to highlight, there's ongoing issues. I know we had playground equipment that we were acquiring. There was a supply chain issue with getting the matting and safety equipment and parts for that, which delayed that several months. Additionally, we have things around the district where we're waiting weeks or even longer to get a repair item just because of shipping. And we are monitoring toner issues, where there's a shortage throughout New England or even the country for that, which potentially could have an impact. So, did you want to go right on to the next one, Dr. Boyd?
Go ahead. I was going to go through the whole thing.
Oh, I just had a quick question about the report, Dr. Hall's report. The para-professionals, the 28 openings, those are new openings? And I just want to make sure I understand it. Will they be working in the classrooms with the special education students?
Yeah, so the curriculum department acquired this for us, and it was great news that Ms. Desmond shared with me. We put it right up, and our special ed director is captaining the acquisition of these paras, and they're going to be deployed after analyzing it to the schools to assist.
So, across district, across grades?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, and Ms. Desmond will share the next presentation around safe and welcoming schools. You'll see many of those same themes that carry on. Ms. Desmond will also share with the committee our recommendations for allocation of resources to support the needs that we're identifying and assessing. Ms. Desmond also can share some additional information around the para-professional position and some of the other data that Dr. Hall just shared. Ms. Desmond?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. I'm just going to quickly go through the first two slides, because they're just title slides. But if we look at Slide 3, we're really looking at a comprehensive approach to what a safe and welcoming school environment should look like. And when we look at all of the elements beyond just the physical attributes of the facility, we want to ensure that there is robust safety and security protocols that are in place, that there are consistent rules and expectations that are communicated and taught and reinforced to our students, and then also that there's engaging and rigorous instruction, which, you know, allows students to really participate fully in the school experience. And so, those are the three elements that we wanted to focus on here today, and how do we make some improvements in those areas? And so, when we started really looking at the overall picture, we recognized that there are still impacts from COVID-19 that are residual and ongoing, and things that we're facing in our schools every day, such as attendance. Although we have improved with the test and state protocols, we still are experiencing students and staff absences. And, you know, if they're related to COVID, then it's an extended amount of time that someone is missing time in, in school. And then also, discipline. Although, serious discipline incidents seem to be down overall from this period to periods prior to the pandemic, we're seeing increase or increases in other behavior infractions among students that we had not seen necessarily before the pandemic, primarily in the middle and high schools that are affecting the overall school experience. And then also, professional development. We have 94 new teachers that were hired this year. And then, if we look back to March of 2020, we have approximately 170 teachers total that were new to our district. And because of the pandemic, we were not able to provide the traditional professional development that we would have done in past years, where, you know, teachers would come into central office, subs would be provided, and they would receive professional development in various areas. So, we've had to change what that looks like as well. So, we do think that those items are affecting or impacting the schools. So, when we look at the robust security and supervision, there's some things that we're looking at currently to enhance. The first is the work that we're doing with the Lowell Police Department. I did report a few weeks back that there are three full-time secure, school resource officers at the high school, and then there's also a full-time sergeant at the high school. Since then, in working with the at the high school. Since then, in working with the Lowell Police Department, they've been able to allocate another officer to our district with K-9. But they're experiencing staffing shortages as well. And so what we're looking to do is we're collaborating with the Lowell Police Department to see if we can perhaps bring back some retired SROs, similar to what we do with our tutors, our retired teachers who come back as tutors, and be able to have those SROs who are experienced, who have made nice connections with our students already and our staff, be able to support our schools in the way that they did prior to COVID. And then also, security guards. In prior years, we employed security guards at Lowell High School and then also at the Career Academy and the Laura Lee. We are looking to provide some additional security guards where needed. The high school has requested four positions, so those were added. A couple of middle schools have requested security guard positions, and so we are working with them to be able to provide those supports. In looking at the consistency around reinforcing rules and expectations around behavior in the classroom and classroom management, in collaboration with the UTL, a positive behavior resource teacher position is being developed. We would like to see one at every school and five at Lowell High School, which is a total of twenty-nine. And that job description has been prepared to be reviewed by the school committee tonight, so that will be at a later time. And then also, we're looking at mentoring programs and intern programs that are available. One possibility is working with the University of Massachusetts Lowell. They have experiential learning programs, and I have reached out to a contact there to see if perhaps some of those students would be able to work within our schools to provide mentoring support to our students. And then also, we are going to be launching an RFP to see if there's interest and capacity out there for other partners that perhaps would be able to provide mentoring. The hope is that our, the hope is that we would be able to engage in a program of mentors of students who are very, have had similar experiences to our students that are not that far removed from their high school experience, that could really work nicely with our high school students to mentor them around various ways of being successful in the high school environment. And then that third piece is around the engaging teaching and learning. And one item here that we've already talked about is that we did obtain a one-point-one million dollar grant that will be able to provide us twenty-eight additional paraprofessionals who will be able to supplement staffing levels in the schools. They are, they are to work with students in an inclusionary model and also be able to provide additional social, emotional support to our students. So as Dr. Hall said, as soon as we received word that we received the grant, the positions were posted. And we will have the special ed department do interviews and then provide that information to building leaders to see where the appropriate placement would be for those positions. And then also, through the work that Ms. Turner has done recently, there have been many suggestions for expanding our substitute pool. And as Dr. Hall mentioned, there has been some success there. And we're hoping to add some exploratory work that has been done with Middlesex Community College as another possible vehicle for expanding the subpool, where adjuncts, adjunct faculty members may be interested in off-days subbing in Lowell Public Schools. So this last slide is just the next steps and all of the items that I've described. Security guard interviews will be conducted this week to fill positions, and they'll continue to hold those interviews as people continue to apply for the positions until they are all filled. Planning meeting is scheduled with the University of Massachusetts Lowell to continue to explore the field placements for the experiential learning program. We're looking at, as I said, doing interviews starting this week for the paraprofessional positions. The RFP for the peer mentoring will, it's being worked on this week, and hopefully it will be initiated next week. Budget transfer for the school resource officer retiree positions that I mentioned earlier will be discussed later in the meeting with Ms. Turner. The positive behavior resource teacher job description will be discussed later in this meeting with Dr. Hall. And then the alignment of the substitute pay rate for experienced college professors, which is that adjunct piece that I just spoke about, will also be discussed a little bit later on in this meeting. And the final slide is just really thanking everybody, our teachers, our administrators, our support staff. Everybody has been contributing to ideas as to how we can make improvements. And also, our service providers and our community partners have all been more than willing to sit down with us and talk about possible solutions to some of the challenges that we're experiencing. So I just would be remiss if I didn't thank everybody quite honestly for all of the support. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on a couple of the solutions to lack of SROs and security guards. It's well-needed, particularly at the high school. So I think, you know, the effort that the administration's gone to, to try to find ways around that, bring back retirees if possible, and hire more security is something very well-needed right now and appreciated. Thanks.
Anybody else? Quick question through you, Mrs. Superintendent. With the security guards, can we see if there's a need for a floater? You know, when I visit some of the schools, you'll have a security guard out here and there. So maybe we could make sure we always have a security guard at all the alternative schools, and so we could have one position to be a floater.
Sure, absolutely. It's under daily review, so as we see we need additional positions, we'll post them. That sounds like an excellent idea, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall, if you can take note of that and add that posting if it's warranted. Thank you.
And one other thing on the, let's see, with the discipline issues, reinforce rules and expectations. How are we supporting, I know you have something coming up for positions, but are there any other ways that we're supporting the teachers with behavior problems in the classroom that basically fall on the assistant, the assistant principals? Or how does that work right now?
Yeah, so you have a kind of a three-tier support suggestion here, which would be immediate next steps. Part of the challenge is that our current paraprofessionals who are assigned to be within our classrooms, when we have a shortage of substitutes, they get pulled from the classrooms to cover other classrooms, which creates then a hardship in the classroom that they're in where the teacher doesn't have the typical in-class support. So the expansion of the substitute pool will assist with that, as well as the additional paraprofessionals that we're adding. When you're talking about the pull-out of the classroom in support of the student, depending if that child requires guidance or social work support or disciplinary support, that could be the assistant principal, principal, or social worker, or guidance counselor. The behavioral support teacher that is also recommended, that we've been working with UTL to collaborate around, would be an extra, another teacher that can support in a number of ways in the classroom. Could be supporting the teacher, as you heard Ms. Desmond say, we have a larger number of teachers around professional, teacher needs around professional development, because there's an increased number of newer or novice teachers within our programs. They can support that, as well as doing the within-class or pull-out lessons and support for a student who might need an opportunity to step aside from the classroom. So there's a number of ways that that can support. So here tonight with the suggestions, you would be bolstering in three different ways the support for teachers in the classroom. That could also include pull-out support for a student behaviorally that may not require social work or guidance counseling support, but might need that opportunity to step aside and step out of the classroom.
Okay. And just one other follow-up. How does that, does that end up with suspensions, detentions, in-house suspension? How is that going to be affected?
So there's a number of consequences, just depending on the nature of the behavior, the age of the child, and the learning needs of the child. All of the above that you suggested are within tools that a school can implement. There are also a number of other behavioral modification and improvement tools that schools have. So it would depend on the age, the infraction, and the needs of the child. But the school has the district-wide handbook, as well as their own school behavior management system that they would be implementing.
Thank you. Anything else on this report? I guess we're up to a three-response to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This response was provided and prepared by Mr. Skinner. He's available for questions if Mr. Dakota has any.
Any questions, Mr. Dakota?
No, thank you. I'm sure that, I'm not trying to hamstring any of the principals that are trying to afford discipline to their kids. I get that. But you know, and I know, we all know that recesses are really important, and using those as a punishment and not using it as a teaching device, I think we need to make sure we're staying on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Home education?
Thank you. This is prepared for the committee. Ms. Desmond's available for any questions.
Any questions on that, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, Ms. Desmond, do you have a comment maybe on the addresses?
Yes, you'll notice.
I noticed the change, yeah.
Yes, there is a change. We did speak to our attorneys to go through the documentation. And I'm just, what I am doing is I'm verifying the addresses just like I would normally do. I'm just not publishing.
Yeah, no, that's great. Because there's definitely concern that, you know, it really becomes a permanent public document. I mean, you can go back and trace back and find everybody that is homeschooling. And I, you know, if it's unnecessary, great. So, thank you.
I do have the information if anybody wanted to find out, you know, outside of, to verify anything, but I will just won't.
Sure, yeah. And that's, I know, it's important for verification, right, that you have to verify there in the city and all that kind. Yeah, no. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. That was, I actually got a couple of emails from, I think there's an Association of Homeschoolers of America, and they actually sent information. So, thank you for bringing that up. And you could become a lawyer when you're done with your firefighting missions. Next, we have, that's it for that. So we need a motion for the roll call of home education for approval by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call?
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
And we need a motion to accept the report through eight-three by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. All approved, all say in favor. New business budget transfer?
Thank you. The first recommendation here is for a budget transfer to fund the temporary part-time SRO retirees in partnership and in collaboration with the Lowell Police Department. Ms. Turner, if you can provide a short summary of that transfer. The recommendation is approval as written. Ms. Turner?
The important part is just to point out that we are taking the money from savings, areas of vacancy savings or salary savings from replace and retirees. So we do have the funds to fund the part-time school resource officers.
Ms. Doherty?
I just have a quick question. In terms of these part-time temporary police officers, will they be vetted through the high school? Will they be the ones actually doing the hiring? Or are they just going to be assigned to us? Because I think it is a certain kind of police officer that we want in our high school, someone who's comfortable with young people and.
Yeah, so Ms. Desmond, can you give me details? I think what's important for the committee, these will be sworn officers and will be police officers to be SROs. If they're employees of the district, they couldn't be that. They would be then our security guards. So as SROs, they're employees of Lowell Police. But Ms. Desmond, if you can share the details on how they'd be chosen, selected, and identified?
So it would be in collaboration with Lowell Public Schools. That is how we actually go through the hiring process for the full-time SROs as well. But our intention is, or our hope is, that we're actually bringing back retired SROs. So officers who have had the experience in the past with Lowell Public Schools and have relationships already with our students and staff. So that would be the first hope. But yes, it will be a collaborative effort. The Lowell Police Department has been really helpful in trying to come up with solutions for us.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. And I can say that, I know that the superintendent and the deputy superintendents are, you know, well aware of trying to match the best candidates for the position. So they're aware of that. Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Nine-two substitute pay rate adjustment?
Thank you. This is the recommended pay rate adjustment so that we can collaborate with Middlesex Community College to advertise and offer out to their adjunct professors for days off. Ms. Turner, if you could provide a summary, the recommendation is approval as written?
The suggestion, we've been working with Middlesex Community College trying to attract additional staff. Our first suggestion is to increase the rate of pay from a hundred and five dollars per day that a typical college-educated substitute would get, and go to the retired teacher rate. We are going to see if that works, and we'll try to attract people and reach out and market for position.
Ms. Clark? Oh, just to approve. All right. Motion approved by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Any other questions? Roll call.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Nine-three?
Thank you. Dr. Hall's going to take you through a summary of this position. I wanted to personally thank Mr. Georges, who's here with us today and is going to be speaking on it as well. This position was an outgrowth of an extensive conversation he and I had on a Saturday or a Sunday, I believe, that then led to some collaborative work from there to get to this point here tonight. I believe there's actually an updated description from even the eleventh hour of discussions to make sure that this is as desirable as can be for a new pool of candidates, perhaps, given what you heard on the data of attracting candidates into positions here in a post-COVID environment. We also believe that this could be a position which can take advantage of some of the flexibilities for retirees to come back to work that have now been started to be granted by the state. Dr. Hall, can you run the committee through this position? And I believe Mr. Georges is set up to speak as well.
Sure, just one minute. Dr. Hall, if you know, would you want to speak first, or do you want to wait? Okay, all right. Well, usually the speakers go first, but if you want to wait, we'll wait for you. All right. Well, Dr. Hall, you can go first.
Sure. As Dr. Boyd pointed out, there were a lot of last-minute discussions, which I think Mr. Georges will. We made one adjustment around noon, and then we made another adjustment around three o'clock. So I did pass out an adjusted job description right at the start of the meeting that I wanted to point your attention to. But what Mr. Georges and I looked at, and what we've talked to Karen Laflame, their representative, about is to create a position that would be collaborative and to support classroom teachers and alleviate some of the stress that is impacting instruction. And we've really geared this job description to be attractive to retirees who may be interested in coming back to help us out. That's one area that we haven't tapped into, and the state has recently upped the hours to twelve-hundred that a retiree can work back from, I think, around eight-fifty before the legislation When the state of emergency was in place, there wasn't an hourly cap, but now there is. Additionally, there's legislation out there that only allows you to make fifteen thousand dollars over your last position before you're retired. That, from the reading of the legislation, doesn't impact you in your first school year. But if you've been retired for more than one school year, you wanna monitor that in deciding what's best for you in coming back and helping. But Paul and I and Karen have worked to try to make this job description attractive to those teachers who are very skilled and have a lot of experience and who may be available and willing to come back and help us over the next few months until the end of the year. So you can see from this job description, it does include all the requirements that we would have of our teachers. But we also have that they'll be actively engaged with students, collaborate with building staff and teachers, and assist and support classroom teachers in this endeavor. Paul?
Yeah, this came to fruition through a discussion, I think it was on a Saturday. I came up with an idea after I'd heard they were gonna expand the number of hours that a teacher, a retired teacher could continue to teach. Invaluable resource. We know who the good ones are, we know who the ones who really build a rapport with their students, have their capacity, particularly now as a result of the pandemic. The money that's here is here based upon the need of the system. Last time I was here, I encouraged that we try to bring additional support for teachers and students at this critical time. Now, the time is of the essence because this is the time we can have the greatest impact by, if you wanna put it, some way flooding the system with adults to help create an environment where teachers sort of develop their own rapport, their kind of conduct, which would be absolutely wonderful. Just in following up with that, we did do a pretty thorough survey, which we haven't quite completed yet, but the early results are quite positive with information. One thing I'd like you to consider, and I spoke to the superintendent the other day at the high school about this, was the idea of eliminating some of the new initiatives. You're just putting more on the plate at a time when the focus needs to be the social, you know, development of a child and attention to their needs because of the impact of the pandemic. Putting too much or too many new initiatives will bury people, and they'll become discouraged and so will the kids. So this time, I think, is time to heal, is the time to focus. I just wanna let you know, one of the questions we asked our teachers, because last time I was up here, I talked about the money that was being let aside for, or put aside for air quality, ventilation, heating, so on. So I asked our teacher a very simple question. See if I can find that down thing now. It was essentially a question about what would the best use of the ESAR money be? Is the best use, because at one time, this money was put aside by this board for heating, air conditioning, ventilation issues, and so on. Or what is the greatest need and what would the teachers recommend specifically? We asked them in a way that simply said, considering the buildings belong to the city of Lowell, it's their responsibility, what is the greatest use for that ESAR? What is the most constructive use for ESAR money? Ninety percent of the people who responded, which is six hundred and thirty-three teachers, paraprofessionals responded on this, indicated it should be put into services and personnel for the kids. That was their, and you know we fought this battle for a long time about the condition of the buildings and trying to push it. But it shouldn't be the responsibility of ESAR money earmarked for kids to be used to alleviate the obligation of the city. And we're getting no guarantee about anything about how much the city manager expects to put into our schools. And quite frankly, I'm not sure she's planning on any. But let's not do it at the expense of our kids. Right now, we need, the kids need more adult supervision, and the teachers need more help in the classroom. So we support the idea of these new positions that are coming up, these behavior, if you want, behavior specialists, resource teachers. We believe that'll be very helpful. It may not be enough, and you've got the revenues to be able to address the kids' needs. I would say spend it because it's money well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the one point of clarification that you would notice in the last slide, the intention here is twenty-nine of these positions, including five at the high school, two at the STEM, one at every other comprehensive elementary and middle school. With each position that we add, the first approach will be to take vacancy savings. That would be from the staffing shortages, so they would already be in a salary line for the jobs sustaining them beyond the vacancy savings as Mr. Georges referenced, may lead us to bring back to you within a reallocation of ESAR if that's warranted. But we do believe these jobs would be beneficial and to get them launched immediately. So the recommendation is approval as written, understanding it would be posted for twenty-nine such positions, not just one.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I strongly support this proposal, and I think Mr. Georges stole this line that I had written down before you said it, an untapped valuable resource of our retired teachers. I think getting them on board would be such a positive thing for our kids going forward, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would say that I agree with everything that has been said about the need for staff. We need frontline people. I was thrilled to hear we're gonna have twenty-eight more pairs in our classrooms. I guess my only issue with this particular role is I would ask that we wait till we get more information about the mental health concerns that our students are facing, which impacts everything, their ability to learn, their behavior in the classroom, all the other factors in which I don't see this as being a direct response to that need. And I wanna, like, we all know that right now, our community services around mental health is severely lacking. I mean, you can't even get on a waitlist to get mental health services for a child. We have social workers with caseloads of one, one social worker for four hundred students or more. You know, we'll have an elementary school that has one social worker. So many times, the social workers are putting out fires, dealing with crises, not actually providing the therapeutic services like a small group setting once a week, even individual counseling that would have immediate impacts on the behavior. So I'm not saying that this isn't the role we should use, and I certainly appreciate the collaboration between the superintendent and the teachers' union. I see many benefits of getting more bodies into those classrooms and into our schools. I just don't wanna make that decision now. When we've got a commitment from Dr. Boyd, we're gonna get that data that was my motion that I asked for earlier tonight about what is the extent of our mental health concerns with what are our children demonstrating in terms of these measures that we have to look at? Where are they focused? Because maybe it's gonna be not twenty-nine, you know, building teachers, five at the high school, and every building gets one. Maybe it's gonna be more focused at the earlier grades, maybe it's gonna be more pairs. I don't have that answer. I'm just asking that we don't pull the trigger until we have the data to really support that we're moving forward because we don't have unlimited funds. And I would argue both sides, yes, it's the city's responsibility to maintain the buildings. But we also, we made a commitment because we understand that ventilation, windows that open, shades, screens, they are critical for our kids and our staff to be able to work in our buildings. It's not gonna get cooler next June than it was. I mean, we're seeing the impacts of climate change every day. We need to be responsive and doing what we can. Not that we'll do all of it, and we certainly expect the city to do their fair share around maintenance, but I really want us to think wisely about how we're spending these funds to get the best impact for our kids. And I think where you can't refer a student, the kids who are going out in ambulances, right, for mental health concerns, they're not getting counseling because there's no counselors to provide those services. So what do we, what can we do in the schools to help those kids? And it might be more social workers, not teachers that, I mean, I love the, you know, the description, three years' experience, knowledge of research-related effective classroom management, but they're not therapeutic counselors. They're not people who can help the kids with the trauma, with what they've, the last year of this pandemic, all those issues. So really, I agree, we all agree, we need more frontline staff for our teachers and at every building, at every level. But before we move on this, twenty-nine positions, I would rather just wait till the next meeting and get the data to support where the needs are and how do we best meet those needs? Because I haven't seen that yet.
If I could, Mayor, I think I might have a little bit to help here. This wouldn't be an either/or, it would be a both-and. We do expect to bring back to you recommendations and suggestions at each subsequent meeting if there's an analysis and an assessment of that need. Here, what you're looking at is the fact that we have a hundred and seventy teachers that haven't had the opportunity for in-person experience at all. I can tell you, as a first-year teacher, it's vastly different, the level of support that you need, particularly around classroom management and support in the classroom. And a hundred and seventy is because it's not only our teachers starting this year, it's any teacher who started since we entered the pandemic. And our schools are not typically equipped for that number of support, and our teachers need it and deserve it. So this is a different type of support. It's not to say that we don't need added resources in that area, but this would be resources that would be supporting, that would come from a teacher skillset. And we would certainly expect to bring to the committee also recommendations as we gather additional data around the mental health needs. So I would suggest, don't view it as an either-or, this is as a both-and. As the data becomes available, as the needs are identified, I think it's our responsibility to bring to you those recommendations so we can get them implemented as quickly as possible. So again, both-and, not an either-or.
Can I just follow up with that? So are you saying, Dr. Boyd, that we could potentially be adding a social worker to every school building as well? If we determine that the mental health needs are that strong in our district? That this, where are we gonna get the funding for all these positions?
Yeah, so here you have two pools of funding available to you as a, as a school committee. You have the pool of funding from largely around the vacancy savings due to the shortages that we have experienced. You set aside in July one an encumbrance of all of your budget, a hundred percent of your budget is encumbered based on your vote in July one. Now, as we start to get, and you're gonna start to get, starting in December, going into January, the regular updates on this year's budget as you start to plan next year's budget. Ms. Turner can provide you a snapshot here today, but she'll also have a more specific update going forward, how we can reallocate and reassign those dollars that are saved essentially through those vacancies from how it was encumbered in July one. That comes to you in a few different ways. Substitutes, when there's a shortage of substitutes, we allocated based on historical data on the substitute availability. If substitutes aren't available, we're not spending those funds. That results in dollars back essentially to unencumbered dollars. Professional development, you heard Mr. Georges reference initiatives. A lot of those initiatives require professional learning that also requires substitutes. So some of the dollars that you've allocated and had encumbered based on professional learning needs, based on a forecast of what this year would look like versus what it looks like now, leaves open dollars. And then any position that's open for any time period that is not filled then becomes also savings back to the district. Then you also have your ESAR allocation, and there's a couple of different funds within the ESAR allocation. You have the facilities earmark, and then remember, we also had extended negotiations with UTL that extended beyond the start of the year where the committee had encumbered a certain number of days of professional learning days prior to the year, where now we have a collaborative agreement where those dollars will be expended in years future, but you still have the dollars that now have mounted from the current year. So you have a couple of pots of money that give you financial flexibility and give us confidence that we can provide to you recommendations that are both-and without an either-or within this context of COVID because of the federal supplemental dollars, as well as the way that this year has progressed versus how we had planned back last March going into budget approval for July. Ms. Turner can share with you further details, but she will also have a more itemized report for the committee following the usual budget cycle, starting next month, going into January, when the governor releases his first initial proposal. So closing out, if you recall, Ms. Doherty, some of how we closed out the books last year where we were able to make some mid-course within-year adjustments as the year rolled through, we're finding that to still very much be the environment right now, which then gives us that confidence of dollars.
You all set? Okay, anybody else? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Just two quick, quick points. I think, you know, to the superintendent's point of both-and, I do think it is certainly important that we remember that the dollars we spend this year, we don't get to spend again. You know, ESAR has been provided to us over, as a several-year plan. So I do think that it is wise for us to be, you know, making strategic investments with those dollars, but recognizing that if we're, you know, everything we plow into this year, which is when the need is the greatest. So I, you know, I do think proportionally speaking, it certainly makes sense to make these investments now. But I share the concerns around scope. So, you know, I think I'm very comfortable approving the job description, but I think as we look at the actual numbers and deployment, we should have some time before that gets actually written in stone. Would be my sense. Secondly, I do just wanna kind of, regarding the actual job description, again, as you're describing this position, I think it's very clear that you're seeing it with the emphasis on the resource teacher. So it's functioning as a, you know, professional development tool, a support for teachers. Definitely needed, and certainly needed in our current environment. But I do believe that the job description does state quite clearly that there is direct services to children as part of this job description, yet that hasn't been mentioned. So I do think it's important, I would like to be reassured that there's gonna be direct services to students happening with this position and that it's not simply a resource for teachers, but honestly, a resource for students directly.
You have a hundred percent assurance of that. Thank you for pointing that out within the job description. And if I could, Ms. Martin, there are some further clarity, given the ongoing collaboration with UTL that Dr. Hall was prepared to share with the committee. I don't know if this is a good time to share that as well. Dr. Hall?
Yes, just that Mr. Georges has to bring this to his ratifying body this week, so it's still not a hundred percent approved. I just wanted to share that with the committee.
Anybody else? Quickly, I just have the same concerns that you had. I mean, I think we need the bodies in the classrooms, in the schools, and I did, I thought the job title was a little off-base with what the description was and what the role was gonna be. So I hope that we do support, it does have direct services to the students as well as resource for the teachers too. So that was my concern, but certainly gonna vote for it.
Absolutely, that's absolutely there, clarity within, and if it wasn't clear in the presentation, I would apologize. It is definitely and absolutely within the job description and the expectations.
Thank you. Roll call? Oh, approval by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay.
Are we approving the job description or this, yeah, what the actual plan is, the implementation strategy?
Oh, our recommendation is approval of job description and permission to post to get this accelerated as quickly as we can to get the services in front of kids.
But we don't know what the changes are yet, right?
Dr. Hall, did you wanna provide any clarity?
From my discussion with Mr. Georges, I believe they would just be cosmetic and not go towards the substance of what's there. But if Mr. Georges disagrees, I'm sure he'll clarify.
George, did you wanna? This is important, so we'll let Mr. Georges come back up.
I think we have, you know, we agree to about ninety percent of what's there. It's more editorializing or sort of taking the focus away from more of the management end of it, if you want, for the positions, and focusing more on a collaborative relationship where they're working in tandem so that these people that come in as specialists work, again, collaboratively with the teachers and support of the teachers rather than leaving language in there that could be interpreted that they could be acting as management of teachers. Okay, it had to be equal, that was the concept. So anything would change now, would just be.
So the, anything would change now, would just be changing the editorial sort of content, if you want, so it's clearer and not intimidating to anybody who might see this as another layer of bureaucracy that they might have to deal with. You know what I'm talking about, Indian.
But they will deal with the children also, right?
What's that?
They'll be supporting the students and the.
The idea is they're going to be, absolutely, they're going to be, want to make sure they're working with the students and offer an opportunity to, how can I put it? I guess, an opportunity for alternative placement from time to time to make sure that the class is still going in a cohesive direction, you know, if you know what I'm saying. Without, without kind of creating additional alternative schools or any of that, it could be that it would be more like adjustment classes, you know, mini-adjustment classes, perhaps, but in a capacity of supporting the teachers' work. That's, that's where we wanted the editorializing to be a little bit different, that's all.
Okay.
If that's okay. Thank you.
Court call, yep.
You haven't talked about cost at all, so my understanding is, teachers would come in at whatever their experience level warranted. So if you're getting retired teachers who've got 15-something years, 30 years, whatever, they'd be coming in at a much higher rate than a three-year experience teacher. So what are we looking at in terms of cost for 29 of these behavior resource teachers?
Or, Ms. Turner?
Two point, 2.5 million. I'm sorry, would you say that again?
If we, if we're averaging 84,000 for a teacher, it would be approximately 2.5 million.
I don't know.
2.5 million dollars, 2.4 million. Again, I would ask that we just.
Remember, that would be prorated, so then you would end up with a proration of that. That would be if they had come in at the very beginning of the year.
I'd just like to finish. I really, I'm not against this petition, this position in particular. I absolutely support more staff. I just don't want to make a move on this tonight when we have data and information we're waiting for that's going to give us a much fuller picture of what our students are facing.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. I, you know, I appreciate the request for data, but we know that more bodies are needed in the building and more support for our staff, and particularly around areas that Mr. George has just talked about. The superintendent believes that this is the timeframe that we should move on. The UTL agrees. Are we the only ones that'd be holding this up? Probably. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Yep, motion approved by Mr. Dillon, second by Ms. Clark. Roll call?
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
No.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Six shades, one nay approved.
Approval of job description. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is related to a very specific grant and a very specific initiative related to the Portrait of a Graduate that the school committee is aware of. The initiative, the second iteration of this, Ms. Phillips has been working diligently across to continue the relationship and the partnership with the funder and to continue this initiative moving forward in a collaborative way with the community. Ms. Phillips can provide a summary. The recommendation is similar to the last approval of the job description and permission to post, given that this is a short-time job position for this current school year. Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, school committee members, I mean, basically, that is, as it's written, it is to support the Portrait of a Graduate. It is fully funded through the BAR Foundation, and the duration of the funding is through June 30.
Any questions on this? Ms. Martin?
So are you anticipating that there's already a particular staff person, either here or at the foundation, that would be moving into this role?
School committee member, Ms. Martin, we do have some people who have expressed interest in it. I think that it could be a retired staff person, it could be a graduate student, but someone who really is looking for a short-term opportunity.
So it's not an, like, this isn't an existing staff person that this will now, that they would then shift into this, it's going to be someone coming in as a new hire?
That's, that's correct. That's the intention. It is open to whoever applies for it, but I'm not aware of, you know, strong interest for an internal candidate.
Thank you.
Ms. Darney?
Yeah, I just had a question regarding the salary. So it's a seven-month position for 70 or 80,000 dollars, right?
It would be a prorated amount or annualized.
So that's an annual, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Motion approved by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Clark. Roll call?
Ms. Martin? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Nine-five, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is the continued conversation, we just haven't solidified this with an approval. What I heard from the committee at the last meeting were twofold. One, that the initiatives themselves in blanket form don't align with any individuals' necessary will, but there is understanding that it does align across with the majority's will. The second was that we focus on and continue to communicate the impact of each. We would expect to bring back to the committee regular reports on each initiative, a various benchmarking, when we would be sharing with the committee the impact there or the intended impact going forward. Some of them are quite literal and spoken to quite literally within each of the actions and deliverables. Others, of course, are building out the planning necessary. Enterprise resource planning is a multi-year, complex endeavor, but as we undertake that, if that be the will of the body, we would be providing benchmarking updates to the committee. I believe that accounts for the committee's questions at the last meeting, so this would be then procedural approval, just so that we can get moving with the work and move out of goal-setting.
Thank you. Any questions on this? So just to clarify for myself, this is the goals of the team or of, from you? I was getting a little confused here.
All of the above. So what I understand and what I believe is that the goals of the executive are the goals of the organization as a whole, so it's not just myself that does that work. The organization as a whole will be conducting that work, and I'm accountable for making sure that that work occurs in this current academic year.
Okay. Thank you. Motion approved by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Clark. Need a roll call on this?
Ms. Martin?
Roll call.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Nine-six, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This is the periodic reauthorization of the proposal of the Career Academy and Engagement Center. Mr. Skinner, if you can provide a brief summary?
The Career Academy in Lowell is an innovation school. It's authorized locally. The Department of Education allows for us to run a school on some different criteria. They allow us to authorize a school to have some different, what they.